Yes, sir.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
You're good? Okay. Good evening, welcome everyone to the Indian Trail Town Council regular meeting for Tuesday, January 7, 2020. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ian, since you're here for work, you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, to be quiet, of the United States of America, and to be a republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, that with the review of justice for all.
If everyone will remain standing for a moment of silence, if you would, please keep all of our troops in your mind and pray for their safe return home. Thank you, you may be seated. Let the record stand, all council are present and accounted for. We have a guest in the back for our Boy Scouts, Ian, wave your hand. So, let's be good tonight. So it gives us a good report. First item, are there any additions or deletions?
Two additions, sir, and...
Would you...
Request to move an item, sir.
Okay, if you would handle one at a time, please.
Alright, so first item on the consent agenda, I'd like to move item B from seven B, sorry, over to nine A, if you don't mind.
That's done. That would be the contract on, offer to purchase and contract?
Yes, sir.
From the Moser Group?
Right.
On the old town hall, okay?
And...
That's old business A.
Yes, sir. And then for new business, item F, sir, like to add it, cemetery ordinance, ordinance number 325, council has copies of that ordinance.
Okay, are there any objections? So moved.
And item 11D, sir, discussion item, which is policy meetings and training, sir, for the council, like to add that.
Any objection? So moved. Okay.
And just one question for Ms. Quinn. Four A has been removed already, right? Do I need to make a motion to remove that, or it is removed?
I think the mayor can just note that it's been rescheduled to another date.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yeah, for presentation, item A, art display, has been rescheduled to the 128 meeting?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, are there any other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? If not, I will need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor?
Ah.
Oh, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to presentations, the first one is for, is it VITA, Holistic Health? Dr. Rodriguez? Welcome to Indian Trail, give you a minute to introduce yourself and what you do. We'll share.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dr. Francie Rodriguez, I'm with VITA Holistic Health. I just opened my practice a year ago in June. I have been practicing as a naturopath for eight years and as an acupuncturist for six years. As a naturopath, I help my patient's body natural self-healing through natural therapies such as supplements, lifestyle changes, diet, along with modern science. I have successfully treated patients with thyroid, women's, and male hormone issues, along with digestive issues and the more common conditions such as diabetes, hypertension, and high blood pressure. As an acupuncturist, I use very thin needles, they're very hair thin, along with other eastern treatment methods that help the patient's self-healing and body, self-healing start and along with, to help them balance their bodies. I have mainly treated pain conditions, arthritis of the knee, the back, the neck, along with sciatica, and also insomnia, depression, anxiety, digestive issues, and had pretty great success treating patients post Bell's palsy and post-stroke. I am located across from the Indian Trail Library on the one-story building. I am a native from Colombia, so I am fluent in Spanish, and if you have any more questions or interests, you can find me at vitaholistichealth.com or phone number 704-684-9867. Thank you.
Come on up. Help us go tissue? Look on scotch tissue too. On behalf of the Town Council, the Town Attorney, Neil.
Thank you.
As a token of... Okay, that brings us to a new employee introduction. Ms. Warner, are you introducing?
I am. Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Haven't seen you guys since the new year. So I have the pleasure of being here tonight to introduce our newest staff member. This is Matt Ward. He is a new member of our planning department and is going to be our new senior planner. He has earned a Master of Urban and Regional Planning degree from Virginia Commonwealth University, and he also holds a Bachelor's Degree in Geography with a concentration in urban planning and environmental studies, that's a big, a big thing there, from UNC Greensboro. He has worked for the, Enrico?
Raico.
In Raico, excuse me, in Raico County Planning Department, the city of Concord, and he most recently worked for the town of Harrisburg. So we're very excited to have you, and we look forward to seeing you thrive in Indian Trail, and I don't know if you want to say a few words or...
Just want to say appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to working with everyone and getting to know each and every one of you, and I'm here for any questions or anything you may have of me.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, that brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase their person's allotted time. Comments will be directed to the entire council as a whole and not to individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period, that otherwise, that being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech that, or behavior that I or the council reasonably believe will eminently result in a disruption of the meeting. I will, you have three minutes when you step up, please state your name, and you begin. Joe Brundet. And Abby, welcome.
Alright, hello, I'm Joseph Brundet, and this is Abby Brundet. We're both from the Abby's Angels, Joe's Jolly Elves fundraiser, or charity. We would like to thank the council members, our businesses, and our citizens, most of all, for your participation in the charity event. Thanks to all of you, we were able to collect over 150 gifts to bring Christmas to over 30 children, whose mothers have been battling breast cancer. If you go, and this was by far the biggest and rewarding contribution of this charity event for the, for the past three, three years. And if you could, if you go onto Cindy's Hope Chests Facebook, you would find some posts relating to the families and how their experiences of their Christmas has changed because of it.
So once again, we would just like to thank all of you for not only making a difference in a bunch of other families' lives, but also being able to help us out and reach out to several more families, and hopefully in the future years, we can help out several more than we, than just the 35 children that we helped out this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for all you do throughout the year.
Thank you.
Yes, Abby, you can leave now. Gail Mercurio.
Good evening, my name is Gail Mercurio, I live at 3411 Brooktree Lane in Indian Trail in the Brookstone Village subdivision, which is, for those of you who may not know, next to Lake Park. I have two reasons for coming tonight, and my comments will probably be less than three minutes. The first one is, even though I've been a resident of Indian Trail for 25 years, this is only the second time I've been at one of these meetings, and I wanted to reintroduce myself to how everything works. And the second reason that I'm here is because I presented your downstairs staff with a petition this morning, and it went to Mr. Sadek, is that how you say your name?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to make sure, it's for repaving the roads in Brookstone Village, which have not been repaved in 25 years, and the potholes just can't take those little gravel pieces anymore. So I just wanted to make sure that you received it and that it's recorded. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, it's going to be council feedback to public comments, but if the council hold off for one second to allow me to give the floor to Mr. Sadek to respond to the...
Yes, I do want to acknowledge that we received the envelope with all the petition pages, and I delivered it straight to our Director of Engineering, and we are going to look into it.
Thank you.
And you'll keep her updated?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll provide an update.
Okay, does council have any feedback to any of the public comments?
I have a question for, for Patrick. Is that, do you know if that street is a town street, or is it a DOT street?
North Carolina DOT streets in the same spot, we, we've been dealing with that, so as I shared with council, we continue to press North Carolina DOT, we're waiting for their priority, which we should be receiving it soon, and as soon as we receive that, we will respond, we will keep council informed and respond to neighborhood and citizens like the lady that approached us. Not much we could do on North Carolina DOT streets. That is one strategic item that I shared with council, which I called it street maintenance. If council decide in the future that we could participate in some streets that they're really, really suffering, and we know that they're not going to be repaired anytime soon, and we will be coming to council recommending if we could allow to do so, if the budget allows. So we are going to visit that item when we get into the strategic planning.
Thank you.
Any other feedback, council?
I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, just anybody else? No? Okay, we'll close public comments and bring on Captain James for an update. Welcome, sir, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Mr. Aaron. Counsel, don't take much of your time again. One thing that was posed to me earlier, I just wanted to make sure to clarify before I got started, the numbers that I have been delivering to you the last couple of months, these are all Indian Trail numbers. They're not filtering in, or they're filtering out everything this county related, so everything that you've got before you is all Indian Trail. This past month, in the month of December, we had 250 total reportable incidents that happened in Indian Trail, down just slightly from the month of November, 413 business checks, 1,997 preventative patrols. Along those lines, as you look through those numbers at your leisure, our break-ins are showing a decrease, mainly in the car break-in area. I don't know if that's, I think a lot of that lies with our residents locking their vehicles, for one, but I also think it's because of the increase in our presence in those preventative patrols in these neighborhoods, and we're making high visibility a priority around these neighborhoods that we're having problems with those break-ins. Another big thing in December was our target enforcement effort along the 74 corridor, 438 total traffic stops in the month of December. Were slightly up traffic stop-wise from November, but with those increase in traffic stops, we did get a slight decrease. I don't know if it's really measurable yet, because I have not got the highway patrols numbers for the month of December, to see what, how many they actually took compared to us. Our reports were down the month of December. So we may be making a dent, it looks like we may be making a dent on them. During that target enforcement effort, 206 total traffic charges during the month of December. In the speeding category, your high speeds topped out at 101 miles per hour in the 74 corridor, but the majority of charges were red lights and U-turns. Eight drug charges and three alcohol violations were charged by one of those three that were working this targeting, the fourth minute. You're familiar with the packet by now, the last page, or last couple pages are your wrecks, or your crashes in town. The end of this month, or next meeting, I'm hoping to present you with the yearly stats from 2019, from January to December, hopefully with a little more targeted areas around the crashes in town, which are, they're all going, I feel like they're all going to resort back to the 74 corridor, due to the construction and the super street project, and probably maybe a lot of the little blurbs that you saw in the last one, but the, we're working on that data now and trying to get that. So, like I said, the end of, end of this month, next meeting, I'll, I'll have that for you. One last thing I've got for you, I presented you with, well, y'all were really the first couple to be presented with the Indian Trail Division new challenge coin. That challenge coin was taken on and designed in memoriam of Chase, and if you look at that Bible verse there, that was Chase's Bible verse that's attached to that coin. That means a lot to us, and, but I also wanted you to know, and being the first ones to receive that, that we appreciate the work that you do for us, and the importance that we play in the town of Indian Trail, and the appreciation that we get from y'all.
Question? Do I, when I get stopped, I just show that, right?
No. You'll probably get a citation quicker if you show that.
I had to ask.
I get one of these from my teenagers. No, just kidding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, council? No. Thank you, Captain. That brings us to the consent agenda, the amended consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to old business A, the contract of resolution R200107-01, offer to purchase and contract for parcels 0718, 08, 021, 8022, and 8023, from the Moser Group, which is the Navajo Trail Properties. Mr. Sadek, would you give a brief overview as to the agreed upon, I'm assuming it's agreed upon price, et cetera, what Mr. McIntyre is looking for?
I'd just like to mention that I did provide counsel with an email, and I think Mr. McIntyre would like to take it from here.
Yeah, so the reason I wanted to move it from the consent agenda to this is that it's a sale of the old town hall, and I think to, to continue conducting business in open, there's no reason why we shouldn't just reflect that. Um, one, the, the assessed value of the property from October 2019 is $380,000, and based on the bidding process that has been going on, the final bid, or the winning bid, I should say, is for $419,052.50. So, as council, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, or we accept that price, that offer price on the property, and sell it to the person who made that offer.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. If there's no discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Brings us to new business, item A, quarterly update, point of contact for the ABC Board. Real quick, the reason for this is, I believe, if we can, have a policy for having the ABC Board do a quarterly update to the council via meeting, set dates every three months for them to come in, if there's, if there's an update, if they wish to yield that update, because there's no update, so be it, but since it is a board that has, that has taxpayer money and has a paid board on it, they, I believe they should be giving regular updates to the council in an open session, like Mr. McIntyre said, for us to be transparent as possible. As far as point of contacts, anybody can attend the meetings as, as they're on their own. There is no need for someone to overlook them and hover over them, and their point of contact should be regular, through the town clerk, or the town manager, or if they would need something that needs to be put on the agenda, they could email myself or Patrick to get it over there and get it to the council. So if council sees, I believe the best course of action with the ABC Board is to get regular updates, so we're informed, so if council has questions, they can take care of them at that time. Any questions?
Yeah, who, who will be that point of contact for the board? Is that going to be the chairman?
The chairman of the board usually, or a designated person on the board by the chairperson, come and speak and give information, but once again, any council member can attend a meeting and gather information, but can't speak for the town, as a third policy, speak for themselves. Any, any other questions? For that, do we need a motion for that, or is that something Patrick can just put into works?
Actually, what, we can make the request to the ABC Board to provide the quarterly report. They are not required to do that by law, but I, hopefully, they will be interested in cooperating and keeping the town board, council informed. So it's up to you, if you want a direct staff to go ahead and contact them, or if one of you on the board or council wants to contact the chairman, Mr. Cohn, and get that arranged, that could work out too.
Suggestions?
I would say the staff.
Yeah.
Extend an invitation to them to present quarterly to us, right? Yeah, I think that's a reasonable ask.
We'll take it.
If we could, and at the, at that time, if they agree, go ahead and secure the dates of the times they'll be here, so Kathy can be prepared. Thank you. Thank you, council, for that item. All right, next is financial savings and grants, that's from staff, who's going to be presenting, Mr. Sadek.
In preparation for, for the budget, I would like, for the next so many meetings, to provide this council with every piece of information we have in order for council to put their budget priority, and also to get all the meetings on time. We're going to share with you today a schedule for some budget meetings, so we will not take too much of your time, but we want to make sure all that information is given to council as we move forward with the budget meetings and before the budget retreat, hopefully in June. Adam, if you could show that presentation, please, and I'm, I'm going to speak for a few minutes and turn it to our finance director to take it from there. I've already shared with council these two tables, and, and I hope you do have some questions, but simply what we're showing here, and especially because we have Mr. McIntyre and the mayor going to be taking over CRTPO, we just wanted to give you sort of an idea about how many millions, millions of dollars we got so far, and those millions of dollars, they make big difference into improvement, our transportation system in town, and we were going to continue working with Mr. McIntyre, and the mayor, and staff, and Todd, to submit requests for funding, et cetera, et cetera, but this just to give you an idea, and if you decide in the future in regard to street maintenance, or some transportation projects beside what we proposed before you guys, you kind of get an idea, you know, we got this much money sitting, this is how much we got, this is what we need to target for the next five years, or 10 years, et cetera, et cetera. So simply, the last three, four years, we got about $19 million, and please keep in mind that we, there is a local contribution, so that local, local contribution, it varies from 20% to 35%. The more we contribute, the more chances we, we have to get more money and get our submitted approval. Next item, please. The second graph simply gives you an idea how staff, and myself, and council, of course, without the support of council, we would never achieve these goals. Alright, so there is $4 million in savings. If we continue to save, that will also allow us to have more projects out there, get more streets paved. Let's say if council decides, say, well, Patrick, you and staff, you saved about a million dollars, can we use percentage of that maybe to go out there and, and repair some streets that don't belong to us, that they are vital in town, like as an example, Post, as an example, Post Drive, or something like that. But if you have any questions, I'm not going to go over all of them, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to elaborate on any item, but that's what we try to do every time we have a project, save as much as we can. Just a couple of items I'd like to go over is that we hired two engineers, we have them onboard as an average, you know, average salary of $50,000, $60,000 a year, but paying back, we saved approximately about a million dollars. If we gave that work to a consultant, we could have put $1 million extra. So we do appreciate allowing us sometimes to have flexibility, to have in-house people to end up, help us end up saving some money. Next one, please.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Adam, can you go back to the previous slides? Oh, Abby, sorry. The Old Monroe, $5 million, does that mean that we received $5 million, or it is a pledge of $5 million?
Good question. It's both, in a way. I think council, the original amount that we were to contribute was $10 million.
Correct.
So, the way council handled that is, we kind of saved $5 million, and there is another hidden also saving that we didn't show there, is the $2.5 million that we will be getting, we could use it on another project.
Right.
Good question.
In the future, but the thing is, are you telling me that NC DOT, through the CRTPO, has given us $5 million? In other words, in our bank account right now, we have $5 million, or that is what they pledged? That's the question, because the thing is, the reason I'm asking you that question is to see whether we've received $19 million, or, or to confirm that NC DOT is really going to go. When I see that $5 million there, I'm thinking that NC DOT has funded that project, and they're going to begin right away acquisition and all the other stuff. That's why I was asking.
No, I think it's a, I'm glad you pointed that out. What we were going to do down here is, and, and that's an error on our part, we should have kept the $5 million, well, we have the $5 million under the town contribution.
Yep.
But the project itself is $47 million, so I should have put in that cell, 47 minus five that we're contributing, and that will leave us with $42 million.
Alright.
Oh, Todd has a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Back to the original screen, that $5 million was part of a road bond, correct?
I'm trying to remember, Jim, it, yes, we had, that was, that was part of the 2011 or '13 bond.
11, correct.
11.
Right. It was an authorized bond, Todd, $10 million authorized bond. We've taken $500,000 down, sits in the bank, so we have 9.5 authorized out there through 2021. Haven't taken it down yet.
And the $5 million, Mr. Wagner, $500,000, we have not used that yet.
Correct, sitting in the bank.
That was pulled out to use for design purposes.
Okay, thank you, Jim, thank you.
Good question.
We don't, I think we're fine on this item unless council has any more questions for Jim and I, but Jim would like to elaborate a little bit more on some other financial standing that we have.
Thank you, Patrick. It's good to be before you. Happy New Year, Todd, welcome. Congratulations to everyone, we're very happy you're on, and Jerry and Mike, I hope you're here for another 20 years. Glad you're here. No, it's a good feeling, the town's in a good situation. I hand you out something real quick. Our fund balance... Our fund balance, over the last four, now, these are audited results, folks. The fund balance for the last four years has increased by over $8 million under this administration. And we have a really good staff, but, you know, it starts at the top. He worries about every little thing, and that filters down to a staff. We have department head meetings, people know which, we're all rolling the same direction, and I want you to know that, Todd, you knew, and I know you're on top of financial stuff, but we're in really good shape. Moody's AA1, top 9% in the country. Patrick, first thing you had me do was mail our audit to Moody's in New York City. He wants to get the IBM status, AAA. So that's our goal someday. So we increased our fund balance, $20 million. We have another $10 million that is considered restricted. The town has 30%, we have to keep on, the state has certain statutes. So our total fund balance is about $26 million. So very positive numbers there. Go over a couple of other things. Like I said, our audit was very positive, we mailed it into Moody's right away. Investments, I talked about that a little bit. M earning, you know, the interest rates are dropping a little bit, we have quite a bit of money getting the highest rates. Pat looks at that every month. We move money, we're safe, and last month, we got $42,000 in interest. And when I first started here, the total budget for the year was $20,000, so I don't know how that happened, but I can't really take credit for it. But we do look at that stuff, it's important. It's, I mean, folks, we have an 18.5 cent tax rate. Nobody wants to raise that. I know you guys don't. We're the lowest in the area, and we keep building fund balance, so something is working. And I'm proud to be part of it. We have, our debt service is in good shape. We paid off a bond last year, three years early. In this year's budget, we had budgeted to pay down Crooked Creek five years early, and then we're also talking about paying across the street. We got a payoff number, about $600,000. So we're going to bring that back to you in the future. Pat, you want to talk about that at all, or we could come back to that?
I know the intent is, as we move forward with presenting council with prospects and developers coming into town, and there are a lot of them interested with the properties that we have here. We have seven small properties in this compound right here, and we're working with Karen too, with the bond attorney. So when we get that package together, and Mr. Evans is working on, we have three prospects coming in that interested in all these properties. So we're putting the package together, we won't come before council one day and say, look, this is how much we owe, this is how much we can pay, this is how much each development could bring, and bring all that before you guys, so you could make, give us some direction, whether we need to move with certain developments or not. So we're just in the preparation mood, and also trying to do that as quickly as we can before we make final decisions on the budget. So everything we're putting before you, we're going to put before you the next three, four, five months, it's going to be budget related.
Thank you, Jim.
So that's, again, I don't want to take up too much time at this point, but if you have any questions?
Was that all just under B? Or did you, under the financial savings and grants, or did you move ahead and incorporate some, one of the other items on that?
That's all what we have, saving, grants, and financial.
Okay, so then now we'll move on to 2021 budget schedule.
Yes, sir. And the only thing I'm asking council tonight is, that's meeting we showed, actually in your package, there was a calendar for budget. If council would like to, us injecting as we move forward, some of those meetings within our regular meeting, we'll be more than happy to do that, to prevent having special meetings, or maybe coming on the weekend, whatever. But the retreat is completely different, that's the final one. But if council is okay with us looking at into, you know, half an hour, maybe in February, another half an hour or an hour every month until we get to the retreat, we'll be more than happy to look into that.
No, I think that's an excellent suggestion right there, incorporate it into a meeting where we've already have everybody here. And perhaps, you know, if we have a developer's workshop that doesn't happen, maybe we could do it.
That's a good idea.
That's exactly right. Can I ask you real quick, what do you plan, what do you plan to, what is the plan, what are you planning to present? Not, meaning, I don't want, like, the detail, because you don't know yet, but if you, like, are you planning to present the street projects that we have coming up, or any other capital improvements, or?
No, I think what we would like to present, 100% related to the budget document.
Okay, just the document.
Right, so as an example, the CIP program, what projects we're going to be completing, what projects will be added to FY 2021.
All right.
So it will keep us going with your strategic plan and your master planning, and you're putting your priorities together.
Yeah.
So if council is okay with that, I would like to get an idea, so we could move forward with that. Mr. Mayor?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
No.
It says action here next to it, that's why.
Consensus, right, Karen?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Consensus is fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Was that all for that?
That's all, sir.
All right, next one is the initial budget priorities discussion. Council doesn't mind our leadoff on that. Traditionally, before Patrick, when it came to this time of the year, the town manager would request from council their top five visions for the budget and goals and priorities, and they would send it to him in an email, and he would put them together, see similarities, incorporate them with what they've heard during the year, and come back to council at a meeting, addressing each of the priorities, and it would become a discussion from each of the council, for the council members, for what, does that make sense? What the priorities are, because all of us think differently, what your visions are, and Joe Fivus definitely had that sent out, so he knew what Jerry would be thinking. Okay, Jerry's interested in paying down debt, getting this done, and he'd incorporate that into the presentations during the budget, as far as doing the research, so that that answers your question and fills in the council, so that either the council agrees, it becomes a budget priority, or it doesn't. This way, each of you have your full input. And it's done, it's done by you, the town manager. The town manager also does the same, based off of what's gone on throughout the year, and directives that have happened, et cetera, and that becomes, those are the presentations. And it usually worked out well.
Mr. Mayor, if council would like, I could put the list that I sent to you in priorities based on what staff feel that that's the priority, and then it's up to council to shift them around and come back and say, Patrick, move this one. That way, it gives you an idea what we feel out there in the town, that it's a priority to us, but that's definitely not, maybe not the goal or the direction that council wants to move with.
I think that's good for you to know, but it's also good for, to give direction to the town manager on what council feels are priorities, based off of the residents and what you see out there every day, so he has a clear vision and a directive. Is anybody opposed to, to that? Any interjections?
How about we don't, how about we don't rank the list, but we get a list of things that could be a priority, and then all of us give our opinion on it? Because the thing is, it, council will have to come to some vote at some point to decide which one is the priority, right? Whether we can fund it or not. But the information that Patrick would provide would just basically say, these are the things that we know will come up in the town. And then each of us will opine on whether or not we think it's a priority or not. And maybe there is something on there that we, maybe there is something that we would like to see, that is probably not on there, then we could also add it. And then council says, okay, here are the priorities. The town manager can come back with his staff and say, these things are great, but we do not have the necessary funding, so therefore, you know, guard against this, and so forth and so on. I mean, that's just.
So your suggestion is, give the goals, objectives, and priorities as they see it, and council gets that and ranks them by their priority?
Right.
With questions?
Mark was saying, we can add to it.
Yeah. That way, we don't get, we're not prejudiced by what he thinks is, but we get to see, and then he will come back and say, I think you, he and Jim and the staff will say, I think you cannot afford this. Or, we can do this, if we do this, this, and this, but you can't have this, and so forth. It would open it, I think it would give us, it would also help council sort of understand how each other thinks, but also give each council member a say in what they think, what they see as a priority in the town too, as well.
Mr. Mayor, the list, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think what they said would be really good. I think if we could get an outline and the guide from the town and the staff would be really good, because then, like you said, we can subtract, add from it. But if we got the guide first, yeah, I agree, I think that would be great.
What I'd like to do is, the list that I sent you, what I will do, I'll prioritize that, but I will give a description of each item, because I was very brief when I sent you that list. And I put causes or reasons for us prioritizing or putting it in the list, that way it will help you guys to give us some guidance.
Could we have that as an agenda item for the 28th? That will be our starting point.
Microphone.
Excuse me. Could we have that as an agenda item for next, the 28th meeting? And that's our starting point, and then we will add, the council will add to that.
Absolutely. What I would, what I will do is, I will refine the list, prioritize it, describe it, send it to council this week, so it'll give you at least 14 days, and I will add it as a business as an agenda item for the 28th.
I would ask that you not prioritize it. To see, to see how the council thinks, to see if it aligns, but that's my suggestion. There's four other people here, five, including the mayor, who can give some input on that. But just to see, well, it helps, it's a learning experience too for us, meaning that we'll know, we can't have a fancy thing, or we can do this, or let's, you know, here's the order that we go.
This will allow us to give you better feedback.
Exactly. Then you can come and slap my hand out and say, no, you can't have it.
Yes.
Mr. North?
So I imagine you're talking about the strategic planning list?
Yes, sir.
25 items?
Yes, sir. The only thing I wanted, Mr. Moore, is, because some of these are a year, five year, 10 year. So that's what I like to say, that how we feel that those projects could be accomplished, because some of them, multi-year projects, that's what I wanted to do. I think if it's okay, if I could put multi-year project on them.
That's fine.
And without prioritizing the list, and send it back to you guys before the end of the week.
Does this need to be anonymous, as far as our suggestions? So like, if I was just to spout out, like, a streetlight program to improve lighting at intersections, does it need to be detailed, or does it just need to be infrastructure improvement, streetlight program?
I think I like the example that you gave, you could say, streetlight program, and then that will give us a chance to look around and see, what do we need? Come back with a budget to council, so that's exactly what we need. If anything is not on that list, please let us know.
Can I ask for one more thing, if you don't mind? Patrick, maybe you and Jim. Jim, this is January 7th, I don't know how much heavy lifting that would be, but could we get an idea as to our performance from a revenue and expense standpoint, year to date? I know the fiscal, you know, we end on June 30th, but if you could give us, has kind of like a half a year run rate, where we would have an idea? That way, it would help for us future, for us looking at these projects as well, taking into account kind of where we come in. I know in years past, we've been coming in under budget, which we've been able to put money back to the fund balance, but if you don't, if you can provide that, as long as it's not heavy lifting.
28th, good, Patrick?
Absolutely.
28th, yeah, we can.
Well, council, would that be okay with you as well?
Right. I think we couldn't move with what, without what Mr. McIntyre is saying. I mean, it's all about expenditure, and it's part of the budget. One last item I'd like to mention, I know we probably were out of time, is that please keep in mind that in our budget book, we do have projects worth of $15 million, that's an adopted budget.
50 or 15?
15.
One five.
So every time you think about fund balance, remember that we have 15 that we are committed to. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all what I have, sir.
Anybody else? No, good. You understand what everybody's asking for, for the 28th, Patrick?
Yes, sir, we will get the documentation, sir.
Good deal, okay. The next item is ADA accessibility to the building. I spoke with the attorney. Could you elaborate on what we spoke about real quick?
Certainly. There, the mayor expressed a concern that we do not have a button, ADA accessible button at any of our doors, and his interest was having council instruct staff to go ahead and do that process, so they'd make an ADA compatible door that does have automatic access.
Or is anybody confused, or?
Well, how did we get a building here without that?
I would like to comment on that. When we reviewed the plans, and we asked about that, based on the architect, the architect said, it is not required. He's a licensed architect in the state of North Carolina. We really received some comments from some residents, a couple of them that they were using wheelchair to access the building. So we did the due diligence work by communicating to the architect, so he came in twice so far, and we did not do anything, because the architect told us it's not required in North Carolina to have that button, open the door. Now, if we decide to go that route, if council said we still like to have it, we need to remove that entire wall for the door. We cannot, that door and those panels cannot be modified, so we need to remove the whole thing and come up with something.
Two follow-up questions, then. Is there any legal recourse for the architect who failing to, to basically know his job?
Yeah, he'll be liable if somebody challenged the town that we're not providing ADA accessibility to the building, that is his liability, sir.
Well, I guess the legal recourse, I mean, in contributing a dollar to this, to make these, this adjustment.
It may not, I do not know the answer to this, but it may not be a required piece of equipment to make an ADA accessible door. And if the architect, if he said that a couple of times, then I'm going to guess, there probably is no legal requirement to have that. But again, great, for the town's perspective, it would be a, certainly a accommodation that would be a reasonable and probably expected access component to any public building, though possibly not technically legally required under architectural rules.
And do you have a cost, any idea of the cost that it would be at this point?
We never looked into that, we'll be more than happy to do that, but there will also be electrical security accessible, so it's going to be the entire nine yard.
So that's my, that was my question, as I've been talking about security for a long time. I was going to ask, would it, how much more would it cost for it to be a security that people that, residents or whoever's coming through?
Right. And we have to look into all the time, Adam and I, part-time employees, we look into, it's manually locked sometimes. Right now, what we do is, like, off working hours, we lock the doors, and it has a key, both of them, in the morning and in the afternoon. So we have to look into that, Mr. Head. And just to remind council, we spent about $30,000 on the security system for the lobby and all that. We'll be more than happy to provide what you're asking for, and if you want us, we could go ahead and get a cost estimate and share it with council.
I would like to see a cost estimate, yes. If everybody's agreeable to that.
May I add one thing? Are there any ADA grants for us to put out there that we could possibly get to help, to put in a door?
Most of the town, they're applicable to sidewalks, ADA ramps on the streets, they're not applicable to entrances and exit to buildings, even government buildings.
Okay. If it's okay with council, Mr. Head has requested just to do a cost estimate, and Todd If it's okay with council, Mr. Head has requested just to do a cost estimate, and Todd has a question.
Would it be more cost-effective or practical, maybe to do it at a back door?
No, sir, because the back doors, they're accessible from the back, because our entire site is ADA accessible. It would be better to have it at the front, because we have two receptionists too, that they could monitor in case something happened. In the back, sometimes the rooms are completely empty, and there is nobody in there. So I would say the front will be the better approach.
In your, when you come back with the cost estimate, can you also point out some of the, the risks involved in, if you're talking about taking down a wall to, to, to put the door, it would mean that, it would require, it would probably not be secured or as secure with a door. You know what I'm saying? In other words, if you take out the door, you're going to have to seal it, but it's probably not going to be secure. So if, when you're presenting the, the cost estimate, can you also include some of the risks that you see of some of the issues that, or concerns that may arise from going that route?
Absolutely. We'll come in with a big package for council. How about that?
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, that brings us to item F, the cemetery ordinance. Who's?
Patrick.
Patrick, okay.
Is going to take that.
Okay. That's 11A, Mr. Mayor, right?
No, that's not, that's 10F.
Oh, the cemetery?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, we relocated that one. I had the chance to review our ordinance, and I think Karen did get a chance to review it too. I am very pleased with the ordinance. Kathy, remind me, it was not adopted, was it?
It has not been adopted, it was recommended.
Right. So I reviewed it, Karen reviewed it, I, I thought that every item in it was included, so we would like, we would like this, put this before council for an action, so we could go ahead and get it approved. The reason, what prompted all that is, we had a request from Funeral Home, and they were asking if cremated remain can be put on top of existing graves, and immediately I advised Kathy to tell them no, and that's a manager's decision. I just evaluated and felt that it does have some conflict, unless it's a family member, and if we open that door, then, you know, we, we just can't do that. There's a big liability, and, and the request was a bit odd, so that, that's what prompted bringing this ordinance before council for adoption. So, you know, and in order to move forward, we would like to have an adopted ordinance, so we could abide by it as we go. It's, it's the first request we've ever seen like that, so that's what prompted the whole thing.
Do we, does the town own a cemetery?
Yes, this is a cemetery that we have up on Park Road.
Right. Second question is, Karen, does this ordinance, is this ordinance as written, okay for the town to adopt, council?
Yes, the, the, the rules are effective on the town-owned cemetery, and so any church or private cemetery would have, would not be subject to many of the rules and regulations that we have here, but this is just how we are governing our own town-owned cemetery. And I didn't realize the town owned a cemetery, so this was an interesting piece of legislation to read. But I am fine with the rules that have been set forth in this. I think it's a model ordinance. Isn't that correct?
It helps.
Yep.
I would discuss it, but I wouldn't even know where to begin with this cemetery ordinance.
I'll, I'll interject, it's my two years in the funeral business.
You're an expert.
No, by no means. It is, it is still creepy and it, it, it gives good direction to those that need to place a loved one there, that there are rules, and they can abide by it, because sometimes you can run into an issue, like that unusual one, putting cremated remains on top of an opening a grave.
Yeah, that's kind of creepy to me, but, you know, we, we are, we're in the process of selling town property. Is it, has anyone considered selling that cemetery? Is there even a market for it? Just to, to take, put that on somebody else?
Adam, Adam is, this is a facility, Adam is on top of it, I'm going to let him elaborate a little bit on that.
Are people beating on your door to buy the cemetery?
No, I was actually going to say, there's no plot there available to buy today on, from a town perspective. Now, somebody could purchase a plot from somebody else that has a plot, you know, that they don't need or want anymore. There's a portion of the cemetery that is not marked and will never be marked, because it doesn't perk per Union County. So there's actually, if you drive into the cemetery, go to the fourth little driveway that turns in, everything that's to your right over there, there'll never be any plots over there on that side.
And Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, with the remaining plots that have been sold, when someone requests to dig a grave and close a grave, they have to call the town, and the town goes and digs it and oversees it?
No, sorry, we don't dig. We go out and mark the grave, we mark.
You mark the grave, and whatever the name of the company is, comes in with the heavy movers.
Correct.
The good thing about the ordinance is it does have a lot of rules that keep the cemetery in good shape, and the flowers, and the roadway, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just like.
We maintain it.
Let's totally trust y'all.
Can I make a motion to adopt this?
Yes.
In the interim while we look for buyers?
Okay, Mr. McIntyre, oh, did you have a question?
No, I'm just, so if we approve this, do we need to send this out to all the families of?
No, sir. No, sir.
Yeah, that's correct. This is now, this would be now part of the public law, they're obligated to know what the law is, without us having to do any more than what we do in this process of adopting an ordinance.
Does there's no further question? There's a motion on the table by Mr. McIntyre.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance number 0200107-325, cemeteries in the town of Indian Trail, state of North Carolina.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve the ordinance, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. We can move on from that? That is a, that is a, it is now a dead issue.
We, yeah, we, Shirley was a little sensitive to that, so let's move on.
Yes, that's a discussion item A, Chestnut Square Park property payoff. Jim?
Go ahead.
I got it, thank you again. Such based on this earlier, we got the payoff figure, we'd be paying it off about five years early. About $647,000. We have to pay 1% on top of that to pay off. It's saving about $60,000 in interest for five years. Free the property up for the encumbrances, we wanted to.
Can you repeat that?
Patrick? He's asking, Mr. Morse has asked to repeat it.
Oh, repeat it.
Yes, sir.
The, we, we looked it up, we have a payoff figure of about $647,000. We'd be paying it off five years early. 1% penalty on top of that, so $6,400 on top of that, then that would free the property up from all encumbrances. And then we'd be, we'd be free to do as we wish. Patrick?
And I mentioned earlier that, or maybe in a previous meeting, we, we are, there are a lot of developers that interested in coming in and be part of the approved downtown master plan that was approved, I'm not sure, maybe eight, nine years ago. Gary Evans had three prospects right now, we're meeting with one on Wednesday, and another one maybe next week, that they're interested in the, in purchasing the property. We just need to make sure that we could do that, and Jim, I think, took the first step, and Karen has been helping us out too. So, like I said earlier, if we see a sign that a good development's going to come in, and we feel that they're going to come in and spend a lot of money, we'll be on the positive rather than being on the negative, we will come in to council and say, well, let's go ahead and pay it off, and these guys will be purchasing it, developing the land, and then on top of that, we'll be creating ad valorem tax and sales tax. We're a bit early in the process, the first step we wanted to do is if we were able to pay off the loan. So we did mention to council before that we had it in the budget to pay off Crooked Creek, and now we're trying to pay off the properties right here. Also, part of the properties, without getting too much into details, the one right here on the left side of the building, North Carolina DOT is going to acquire part of that property right here. Most of the time, they come up with a market value. If the impact, drainage impact, the bridge, the elevated roadway is going to have a big impact, then we get back with Karen and we will probably go ahead and ask for a full take. So that way, they don't take portion of it and leave us with a portion that we can't sell, because we do have, a developer would like to develop something right here, match the building exteriors, two-story office building. So we're not there yet, I just, from now on, you're going to see me and see Jim and staff coming in and kind of put you in that mood, that when we have something good, we'll come back before council and say, we would like your guidance and approval on something. But right now, Jim and I, we feel that we could pay off those two parks with the funds that we have available right now.
Yeah. So, Mr. Walderich, you said that the payoff amount is 647, right? And that, that include, that excludes the 10% fee, 10% that fee that we would have to pay?
One percent.
One, sorry, one, 1%? All right. So, sorry. So that's $6,400, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the question I have for you is, did you, or do you have any idea as to what that does to the budget, if we should say, give you instructions saying yes or no? And if you don't have it now, you can always.
We'd have to come before the council, and it's not in the budget, so we'd have to come before you, and I'd ask you to appropriate fund balance at this point.
So that would be from fund balance?
We have contingency money, and we have some positives, we might be able to move some of that money around, but we would have to come before council and, but again, there's a savings in interest for five years, plus there's the ability, we're selling a property, for example, there's a property being sold, that's not in the budget either, that revenue would come in unbudgeted, $419,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the intent of taking that $419, pay off Crooked Creek, whatever is remaining can be used also to pay, pay off of properties in, in this area down here. Just to add, we would like to come to council where we see that a developer is coming in and, and willing to pay the appraised value for any of those seven properties. So we did appraise all of them, we're going to do an appraisal for this one one more time, because when we did appraise all the properties, DOT didn't approach us yet with the area that they're going to take for the bridge. So we will come back to council, we, let me put it this way, we would like to go ahead and pay off the Crooked Creek, because that was committed in this budget.
Crooked Creek is in the budget, correct?
So as soon as the town hall property is closed and we receive the money, we would like to go ahead and move and pay off that one.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
What is our debt service on these two parks? And you don't have to answer that now, but if you can provide that at some point, the debt service on Crooked Creek and Chestnut?
Crooked Creek was budgeted, Marcus, $362,000.
No, 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 what meaning, what do we pay monthly? That's what I mean, not, not the remaining debt, just the monthly.
Pay twice a year, I can get that for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the fire tax, fire fee update for information.
Abby?
Jim? Oh, who's going to do that?
Says Jim.
Jim?
Okay. I'd like to take few minutes on the first part right here. This is, this is what we've received from Union County, simply, they want to move forward with the funding. Indian Trail kind of cover seven different, if you look at the municipalities, that's why they come into us to, for a resolution, because we do encroach on Stallings, Wesley Chapel, the fire district, the town encroaches on the fire districts that delineated, that has all those jurisdictions in it. All right, now, just simply, they're looking at urban, urban districts and rural district, just wanted to make council aware of that. Their proposed program, the 80/20, is applicable to the urban district, and the rural district, it will have a 60/40. I don't want to go too much into depth, I just wanted to kind of get staff, council on board, because we're bringing Patrick Nayland on the 28th to go over that. My intent was, based on council requesting, that we could come in and kind of give you an idea about the 80/20. So this is some description, and what they would like to do, because we cover seven different municipalities, our, our town limit, they're really relying on us approving that resolution, actually, is it resolution, isn't it? It's a resolution. Jim, let me turn it to you, Karen has been involved with that too, all along, and she also dealt with Weddington, right Karen? So she kind of got an idea about what they're proposing, Jim?
Abby, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. Okay, so basically, our team, thank you Gary, Patrick, we're supposed to talk about this analysis, again, he's going to be coming on the 28th, Union County, it's just a county manager. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure if we're getting a fair share, it's not a horrible plan, I'm not sure if we're getting a fair share. The resolution before us still favors the rural districts, the 12 rural districts. So as a percentage, as you see, Union County would be giving the rural districts twice as much as we would be getting, as a percentage. Again, we feel that the seven urban districts are, that's where the action is, that's where all the calls are, and we feel that they should be taken care of, these people first. Union County, they definitely have a problem with the rural districts, fire, they don't have much of an assessed value, but I don't, we don't feel, Gary, Patrick, chime in if you want, we don't feel that they should be doing on our backs, basically. Union County is asking us to basically subsidize that, our people, our people who live in Indian Trail, we still be subsidizing the rural districts.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to go over this chart right here, if you look under current or 80%, current means, what we're trying to say right here, is this is the amount of taxes they collect from each district minus the sales tax. If we take, that's going to be exactly equal to 80%, that's the 80, so they expect on us to take that amount and use it as the 80. And to us, as long as we're not paying more taxes, why would we care? Because they are subsidizing 21, 20%. The only thing we're trying to show on this slide is if you look at the red, that is the urban area, the green is the rural area. So we played with the numbers, we analyzed them a little bit. If you look at that last column at the end, it simply shows that 50% of the tax collected, like each jurisdiction in the rural area, kind of get 50%, we get 20%. If you just look at the percentages. So for, there must be a reason why the county put that percentage out there, and that's what we're looking on the 28th to, for Patrick to explain to us, how did they come up with the number, and what's the reason behind the number. Jim and I, and even Johnny Blythe, we had a few discussions, and we just want to make sure that the urban area, which is the dense area that requires more response, and, and might have more fire than the rural area, will be taken care of, and also will have enough capital in the future to take care of as we. capital in the future to take care of as we grow. We want to make sure that that is taken care of. We also would like Patrick to explain to us what will happen in five years from now, what will happen in 10 years from now, and how is the unincorporated areas also will play a role in this. So we just want to put this before you to make you raise a couple of questions here and there, so we'll be ready on the 28th for Patrick when he comes in to propose. They are trying to get the resolution signed by the town of Indian Trail by the end of January. So...
Who's going to collect the tax?
County.
All right. So it's not us raising taxes?
Right.
But they need the resolution per state law to be adopted so that they can change the funding model. That's essentially what they're doing.
That's right.
All right. Okay, so we'll wait till the 20th then to ask Mr. Neeland some questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to council access to town hall. Mr. McIntyre?
Yeah. So one of the things we wanted to discuss is that I'm kind of getting tired of meeting people at coffee shops if they have to talk about town business. I'm speaking for myself, but other council members can opine. We currently have an office that is in the town hall here that we always have to get access to and ask to use. I'm actually opening this up so that we can have a little bit of a discussion. There is a closed session room that the council does use if there's a closed session. For instance, if we come in early and the mayor, the attorney is in the office, we kind of have to find somewhere to go. So what I would recommend or ask council is to consider the getting access to this closed session room where we get a key card to be able to enter town hall and be able to use the closed session room during town hours if need be. And also, another thing, if this is not a viable option, there are several conference rooms downstairs that we'd be able to get some access to with a key card to get in and be able to use it if we have to meet somebody, whether it's, we want to meet, you know, somebody who has a, who's a resident in the town, a developer, or prospective person, whatever the case is, meaning for town business. How do we go about doing that and adopting that policy? I'm going to turn it over to the rest of you guys to kind of opine, but that's kind of my idea, how do we go about that? And one more thing I want to mention, in, when we have a closed session, we always have to knock on the door for somebody to get us, let us out. I mean, yeah, we can't keep doing that, man. You know, we have a lovely town hall. We can't get, we can't keep doing that. So...
May I make one comment, Mr. McIntyre, about knocking at the door? The reason why these, when we have in this session, the reason for those doors that they are locked from the other side is for safety for all of us. Now, Mr. McIntyre is right, when we go have a closed session, we're always in a need to either I use my key or Adam let us in here. I'm not sure what does it take, Adam, to put, to make the cards accessible to those two doors. We'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you very much for allowing me to make that small comment.
Thank you. I'm going to start down here, Mr. Head. Do you have any?
I, in terms of, you know, bringing people in, or even when we come in, I've always taken the, well, I'll put it two different ways. So if we're just wanting to come in and have a meeting with a client, a resident, what have you, I think either way, we still need to make sure, whatever we do, that the town knows what we're coming in, you know, just, just in case that section is going to be already used, okay? You know, and I really like the idea of, because most of the downstairs, I kind of like using downstairs, and if it's a big deal, we can always use the VIP room for, you know, that type thing. And then I think we've got parks and recs on one end and the other. I'm thinking that we take one of those down there, rather than getting in the way of, of people, you know, employees doing their jobs up here. If we have our own separate section downstairs, I think that would be, I would be fine with something like that.
So presently, the room beside you, Patrick, we had a discussion, or we approved you getting an assistant, I believe?
That is correct.
And where is that assistant going to be working out of? Would it make the most sense to, to utilize that room there beside your office if they're working directly for you as your assistant? That's kind of one question or comment. The second thing is, is how often does council and the mayor and Karen utilize that room? Because I think I've only used it once in my time. And then if we do do a room downstairs, a conference room or something, these, these meetings at the coffee shops, are they normally scheduled or they just, they just pop up? So could we schedule that room, make an appointment, go through somebody on staff perhaps? And, and this particular door, just my comments, it being locked and, you know, we have to knock on it, we do have the sheriff standing out here, and I'm, so I'm real comfortable with that, and as long as none of y'all are going to like attack me while I'm back there to get out. So there's just some comments I wanted to throw out there, and y'all could address them as we go, please.
Well, I kind of originally brought this up, so I've talked to people, other places, and generally what I kind of came to the conclusion was, is I kind of thought this room over here would have access, kind of like a council room. We would want access that would not interfere with the staff, so from that standpoint, maybe get access to the interior double doors downstairs where you can get in. Then you would have access to administration where you could get to the town council where they have an office. So you would have access to that. I think as far as maybe access to a conference room, but you would have to reserve it from that standpoint because we would, one of them, that way, they would know we were coming in, we were reserving it. And you make a good point on that. And from that standpoint, is the access over here from, to do on the closed session room and those things. Personally, being diabetic, I wouldn't mind having access to a restroom downstairs. So the, so from that standpoint, it'd be a very limited access. But the town council would have access and the mayor, and I think that would be good if you're meeting with someone, different things like that. Personally, I wouldn't mind coming into a conference room sometimes with some of the stuff with this town that I can work on because I can't do it at home and I don't really like to do it at the office where I'm at. So that would be my own personal way to do that. So that's kind of what I would propose, and I think I've talked to the town attorney, and I think you've got, if you want to share your ideas on this and what you propose, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, great. So I've spoken with a couple of council members and the mayor and Mr. Sadik on this topic to confirm that the key card security system can be programmed so that there can be limited access. My recommendation is we allow council access to areas where council would normally consider functioning, and so that would be, in my view, the administrative wing, which contains the office for the mayor, council, and the town attorney, and then they also has the conference room that could be reserved in the event of a meeting for somebody. I would also recommend that the council have access to the closed session room and use that as council chambers. My only concern with anything downstairs is that it is pretty public, and there will be times when you all will be dealing with documentation and conversations and information that is maybe best done without public, you know, behind closed doors while it remains a closed session type topic of information. Personnel matters, economic development matters for that matter, so having some sort of more private space would be valuable, I believe. And I think talking to Mr. Sadik, we can control key card access to those specific areas, and then you all would just have a key card and be able to access during business hours and meeting nights.
Ms. Shirley?
Have you called me?
When I mentioned key card access, the one thing I want to guard against is we as council cannot interfere with the staff and the work that they're doing just popping up in their offices. That has to be paramount in that staff has enough on their plate dealing with other things with the town. So we have, as council, have to ensure that we do not go to their offices and ask them questions or sit in the chair and just chit chat. Our job is to come here, if we do come, decide to come, and we agree on something, but to be where we should be and not where we shouldn't. Because I'll tell you honestly, staff is very nice, but council being there, it is intimidating in a sense, and I'm not saying that we're bad people, but the thing is, it does put a little bit of pressure, so we have to be responsible as council members and ensure that we remain or we go to the areas that we should be and not, I'm not saying any of you have done that, this is not what I'm saying, I'm just saying that should we adopt this policy, this is one of the things that we have to guard against. The second thing is if we do end up adopting this policy, and let's say for instance, we decide that the closed session room is one that where council will go in if they want to read some document or something, that we cannot invite members of the public into that room because it is reserved for the council. If we were to entertain or bring somebody in, it would probably be in an area downstairs which is where the public with, on permission, does have access to, whether they're renting and so forth and so on. So that, when I mentioned that, I am, I was, I failed to mention these two pieces, but I wanted to make sure that I clarified that to ensure that we're on the same page. But the thing is, being honest with you, the reason we haven't used it much is because it's not really available, it's not really convenient, I can't get to it, I have to make sure, I say, "Hey, Patrick, can you let me in?" Or I have to find somebody to piggyback on them. It's not the safest way. I mean, I think the people trust us enough that they decided to elect us, so I think we are as responsible, council members, can agree on a policy that would make us, give us the opportunity to get into where we should be, but also let staff know that they can go about doing their work and not have to worry about the council being imposing figures on them.
I absolutely, totally agree with everything you said there. My biggest concern is that we don't have any instances where a council person becomes a roamer and interferes with town staff doing their jobs, because we have our jobs, they have their jobs. The, logistically wise, let's say if there's a couple, three different council persons, and again, I've not been up here to utilize it, but how would you, we handle that, any conflicts as far as, you know, scheduling again?
Can I chime in on that one? I would, these are all great questions. I would recommend, I'm sort of, I know there's policies in Charlotte and other towns that have access and have council chambers and have these policies. If we could have Karen get a few of those and work with Patrick on what's most comfortable for staff and bring it back and present that to us to adopt the policy, what makes the most sense, and ethically, we have to trust each other not to be roamers. And if it does happen, that would be, Patrick would be responsible to notify rest of council.
I think as part of our policies, if we have, we probably implement that if we have a roamer, you lose your access.
Yep.
Period. I mean, if you're on council and you go roaming the halls of the town hall and you shouldn't be there, you're reported and you will lose your access, period. There's a cam, there's cameras all over, so it's not hard to find you. So Mr. Sadik will present the information and council will say, "That's it, you're done, give me your card."
I still think, sorry to interrupt you, that even when you do it, you should be courteous, call ahead, let Patrick know you're going to utilize, yeah, I'm going, this time I'm going to utilize it. If somebody else is conflicted with it, Patrick could say, "Well, Marcus is already there at that time in that office if you can rearrange." And either that or a sign-in and sign-out sheet up at the thing, I'm coming in.
Practically, what generally will happen is prior to meetings, council will have a place to gather and read the agenda, you know, that, so that is, that's why I recommend being, having access to this building because that's generally when it's going to be, or I'm sorry, this building, the, the council room, because that's generally when it would get used. If you have a meeting with a citizen or some other meeting, then you would call and reserve one of the conference rooms, and if more than one's doing it, there's plenty. So I think that way you're, you're able to have access to the building. And again, my understanding is we can restrict the ability for your key card to open the departmental hallways so that will encourage the non-roming as well, and it'll just get you access to where we agreed for you all to go.
Just a quick question, is you sent me a policy regarding town council inquiries, investigations in the town affairs. Did you send that there, buddy?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's aware, we do have a policy about how the council can talk to or not talk to about just now, so, okay, so that's already in place.
Yep.
Ms. Walter, would you recommend that we get feedback from staff on that, or you think that just getting the policy from, from the Charlotte in terms of what, the rules of the road, what works for them? Because the thing is, I don't want, the one thing I don't want to do is to have staff feel threatened because we're asking to use the office. I don't want to know, I shouldn't say this, I don't want to know. I will not be able to understand what it is that you do because you all are all professionals, just as at my job, it would probably be a little bit different, with the exception of the finance man here. But the thing is, the reason we want to do this is just sometimes if I come in early, sometimes I may just want to read. I mean, Abby gave me a couple presents today that, you know, kind of helps me here, but so... Go ahead.
Mayor's... You said something that kind of raised a red flag, basically, the quorum, you know, meeting in this room before council meeting, is there some kind of...
Count heads, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, you're not going to want all of you in the same room, you know, before the meeting starts, but at that point, that just generally doesn't happen. I mean, there's, you know, that's the, people show up, this, I'm sort of trying to be practical about this, and I think I'd leave it to staff to determine the best space that we're going to call council chambers, but it would be very common and very normal to have a designated space in this building that is council chambers where you can, again, you know, prepare for meetings, where you can have meetings, where that's, and frankly, where we can store and leave documents that we want council to review or something, that's very common practice. So that would be normal, and I would think, I would leave it to staff to determine that best space for that, and then I would work with the security system to make sure that that's the only thing y'all had access to. So whether staff wants you there or not, frankly, it was, it's probably a very rational and legitimate ask to have a space in this building that is designated for council, and whether staff wants you or not.
Based on everything what I heard, I'd like to share with you some more information so you could make your decision. Number one, on the weekend or after working hours, let's say the council member decides to come in here on the weekend, you got to have an access code to the alarm, and you have to deal with the alarm. It can be done, but you have to do that. You have, if I may, Mr. Head, let me just give you the info so you could make the decision that you want to do. That room right there, it's been used by park and rec, we could dedicate it for council. In regard to equipment, Mr. Barber, if you guys want, the VIP room is the most equipped room in the building to come and connect your computer to. The office that is next to mine, it's always been mayor, attorney, and council. Mrs. Walter uses it every Tuesday when she comes in here. How often it has been used? Null, almost. Michael knows that, probably he used it several times, but 100% used by our attorney. You asked me if I was planning on using it for the new hire, I was going to approach council for that, but as if council wants it to remain for the mayor and council and attorney, no problem, we don't have any problem, we'll find a different space. We'll find a different space for the new employee. So in regard to equipment, that would be the best room. What's good about the conference room, it has the storage, it has place for refreshment, it has water for your guests, et cetera, et cetera. Now, it is better than this one for only one reason. It's because you have to access those double doors right there. I keep this room locked when you're not here for safety purposes, so no one will walk into this room and plant something in it. Now, if you'd like it to be accessible by a card, we'll be more than happy to create a card for that. So Adam, I'm not sure, maybe we need, when we talk about the front door, let's look as the same company, if we could put something out there. And this one too, because council, if you come in from the front, you got to get up the steps, access that one with the card, and then access that one with the card. I just want to give you all the options we have in the building, so you could choose whatever you want. Also, in addition to that, we do have, all the rooms, by the way, we reserve them. So if you decide to come into the building, you just let us know, you and your guest, you know, what time, so we could make sure the other rooms are not taken. But if this is dedicated strictly for council, we will not use it. So we will dedicate it strictly for council and only council will be using it.
Mr. Head has a question.
Let Patrick finish first.
Yes, one second. Just make sure I give you all the items. We will take Parks and Recs, go to use our admin room. If you want to access this meeting room, you have to access, if you don't access it from the chamber, you have to go through the Park and Rec staff. Yeah, you have to go that way. So the best for your privacy and all that is to be through this room, but we need to make sure that this room is not open all the time. It has to be accessible by a card for safety purposes. And I think Captain James agrees to that. We just don't want anybody to come in, plant something in this room.
Right. Plant or plant?
Plant. Plant, plant. We're planting an item, so.
Thanks for that.
We, I don't think, the mayor has been in our compound before in our admin, you know, you guys been in there, you're welcome. I don't think you've ever interfered with our operation, but because I'm there, so.
No, nobody's afraid of you, man.
Right. But other, definitely, you know, other areas like Mr. McIntyre, finance and tax collector and all that.
Should not be there.
Yeah, these areas sort of like restricted for some of our staff.
Should not be there.
Bathrooms, it is, if you want this room right here for council, you still got to get out to access the bathroom. If you're downstairs in the VIP, it's next door. So I just want you to know the pros and cons about, we'll be more than happy to make any conference room available for council. But if you want to take my suggestion, the VIP room will be the best one for you. And it's the most expensive room and it has widescreen, and if you bring a computer, the wire is right there on the table. The other rooms, you cannot do that.
I think that's an excellent suggestion because also, you know, there could be, there could be two of us in there at one time. You can't fit really two people in that office and be convenient. We only have one access, that's the only one we would access. We have restrooms on either side for, I like that. And then we just designate somebody that council will say, hey, I need that room, such and such. And, well, I'll close with that. I think, to me, I think that's the best solution.
Any final comments, Jerry?
I like that idea, I do. Take off a truth.
Todd, any final comments? Agree, disagree?
VIP room's a good option, to me.
Ms. Shirley?
That's what you want to do, do the council room?
I have, yeah, I do actively. What I'd like to do is, I'd still like us when we come in on a day with a meeting and we want to be able to use that room next door, that we use it, that we be able to use it. If we want to come in and council, the office, the town hall here is closed, so in other words, putting on separate keypad on the outside here for you, us to use that closed session room in off meeting hours, then I would not recommend that. The second thing, Mr. Sadik mentioned about, like, after hours on a Friday or whenever on the weekends, I personally am not planning to come to council, to count to town hall on the weekends. I definitely don't want the code to be dealing with the alarm, so I am not asked, that is not what I'm asking for. So that, let's just put that aside. But if during eight, we open at eight or nine, you guys get here at eight?
We get here at eight, yes.
Eight o'clock, eight to five? If I want to come in and be able to use the office here, I want to be able to use it, providing that one, there's nobody in it, I mean, it's not a Tuesday and Karen is not here, or the mayor is not here, or Jerry, Mike, Todd, Shirley is not here, I want to be able to come in and use it if I can. If it's busy or if there's somebody in there, then I think that the room downstairs, we can certainly go to. I wouldn't recommend that we then go to this closed session room because the way to access it would be through here, we had to put, spend money and put something, put a key card outside. That's not necessary. No need to go through Mr. Park's department, kind of roaming, talking about football. That's not necessary. So I think we can come up with a reasonable solution in that, on meeting days like today, we come in a little early, we can use the key card to get into the conference room here where we sit. If a third person walks in, you tell them get out, meaning we can't have three as for quorum. If I want to come in and by myself without working, without bringing in any person to town hall during working hours, then, and the mayor or anybody else on the council is not here, then I could, I should be able to access the office over there. Go to it and sit down, set up. I've used my computer there before, it's workable. If somebody is using it and I still want to come in, I can come in and go downstairs. But also, if I want to bring somebody in where I want to discuss something or meet two by two like we do with some developers sometimes when they ask us, we can also use downstairs. At no point in time should we bring anybody who's not on council upstairs. Nobody should piggyback on us going into a room. And we put things in place to make sure that we don't have access to the planning, the finance, the areas where we shouldn't be. And also, I would encourage the council to adopt a no tolerance policy, which is that if you're caught roaming, you lose access and that's it. But I mean, that's my suggestion. We can take it and digest it and probably with Attorney Patrick's input, come back on the 20th and figure out what we want to adopt. But I think these are reasonable solutions where it keeps all of us honest, it gives us an opportunity to get to the town hall should we need to, not during off hours, but during the time when staff is there. There's no reason for somebody to come in and open for us on a weekend, but.
And that was, okay, that was one of my questions, is that weekends, we would not be allowed in.
Nope.
Right, okay.
Okay, so it's my understanding for council to direct Patrick and the attorney to work on access to the VIP room?
Yep.
And keep access to the upstairs office?
During the on-meeting days.
What?
On-meeting days.
Well, this office here?
Yeah.
On-meeting days before the meeting?
Yes.
And access to the current little office?
The admin wing, yep.
Am I understanding that?
Well, I'm just kind of wondering why we would need to tie up that many rooms. If we've got access to the VIP room and we got access to this, why don't we just limit it to that and leave that other room available for whoever?
Just as a note, the admin wing, you've got Patrick, me, and Kathy, who all, at some level at least, I mean, Patrick and I completely report to you all, and Kathy, as part of her role, reports directly to the council. So that it would not be an unusual situation for y'all to be able to come up and, you know, limited, obviously, and with appointments and, but, you know, we shouldn't have, you shouldn't have to wait to get buzzed up to that area necessarily. If you all don't want it, no problem, but.
I'd like to use that little office.
What does Patrick want? What does the staff want?
Well, they're going to come back with suggestions.
If, if you feel that these two rooms are enough for you guys, I could use that office for the new hire. But also Karen uses it, so. In regard to bringing guests to town hall, less money for cards and electrical item, I would say that the VIP room is the more welcoming room in that regard. If, like Mr. McIntyre said, you feel to come in an hour before the meeting and you want to access this room right here, definitely that day we could, Kathy takes my keys and unlock, or take Adam's key and make it accessible. If you want us to go through the expense, we have to do probably one, two doors. I don't think we need to do that.
Why would we need to do the front door? On a meeting day, this door is open, isn't it?
Right, but if you decide to have that room to, or not the VIP.
No, no, no. What we're saying, what I was saying, I wasn't saying to, this room here would only be accessible.
During meetings.
During meetings.
Okay.
That's it. When we, during meetings. If there's no meeting, we will not be in there. We would have access to that room. If Karen is in on a Tuesday, even if we have no meeting, but she comes in on a Tuesday and she's in there, or the mayor is in there, or Jerry, Mike, Todd, and Shirley, if they're in there, then we can use a conference room downstairs, you suggested using the big room. The point I was making is not that we're going to tie up the third room downstairs. The room downstairs is open in the event we have overflow or we have more than two at one time, more than two of us, which would constitute a quorum. So instead of having that, so let's say, for instance, tomorrow is Wednesday, I come in, Jerry and Mike are sitting in the office over there. They're not going to be, I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying, you two guys are sitting at the end, so I'm pointing on you two, you closest to, they're not going to be in this room next door. They will probably be in the office because they want to discuss some proposal, whatever it is. If I come in and I say, hey, oh, these two guys are here, or I call you, I say, hey, I'm coming, hey, these two guys are sitting here in the office, then I would say, okay, is there a conference room I can use downstairs? It's not designated for the council, but it's a room that I can get to if I need to. You'd say, okay, use conference room B, I don't know.
You got three downstairs.
I don't know the names, but you would say, okay, conference room B is open because Mr. Evans is meeting in conference room C with some high-powered investors. Then we would know that where we'd go. It's kind of the root of the rules, but whereas I don't have to look for you or look for Kathy to say, hey, can you please open, or can you, being honest with you, I'll tell you, I first, when I first started here back in 2018 in February, the very first meeting I had there and I realized that, okay, we had to get somebody to let us out. I'm sorry, man, when I walk into a building, the first things I look for is the exits. I'm looking for the sightlines and the exits. That's just, because if, in the event of an emergency, I need to go, know where to go. I don't like being locked, man.
I don't want to argue with Mr. McIntyre, but the shortest exit to that room is to go down the stairs back to the back.
Well, and if you're going to have an assistant, it makes sense to have that office for the, for your assistant.
Kicking the attorney out, man.
Hey, listen, I can work anywhere, it's no problem. What, here's what I'm thinking, if this is okay with you all, we'll drop the policy with these options on it for uses, and then when we come to, we'll cross off or add, but we have a general, we have a general feel for what we're talking about and we have the options available, and then you all can say yes, no, yes, no, and it'll be done when it's all done. And we'll talk about access to staff, we'll talk about hours, and we'll talk about restricted spaces in this policy. Okay?
Just the last item that I didn't mention, in addition to the VIP room, also, if somebody's occupying this, we have two more rooms, one in engineering and one with planning, as long as they're not staff using them too. We have many options.
Right.
Come back with options. Okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Last item.
Last item, policy meetings and training.
All right, I asked to add this to the agenda because I wanted council's input on this. Earlier tonight, Ms. Walter presented some information to us in terms of our conducted meeting, who runs the meeting, what constitutes a quorum, how we vote and so forth. I think the second meeting in, the first meeting in November we had, we voted on a rezoning project, which was, I can't remember the name of it, but it was one where, I think, Mr. Head, you were absent.
Oak Springs.
Oak Springs, yes, sir, thank you. And in that item there, we didn't, at that time, we found out that we needed a supermajority, which was four out of five. So there's things like that that come up, where little rules, and in terms of Karen's history, both with the town of Indian Trail, but also with the other towns that she serves, what I've asked, what I'm going to ask her with your input, of course, is, as we go along, as, especially as we had that hour today and we kind of ran short a little bit, are there topics that she sees that could help us in terms of a training or policy that would help us do our jobs better, to help us, to help educate us as to the do's and don'ts? It doesn't necessarily have to cover just zoning or rules of meetings, but things that come up for rezoning or items that comes with ordinances, things of that nature. How can she help us sort of get better? Because the thing is, we're not attorneys. We didn't study at the School of Government, right? We're elected officials. We ran for local council and that's why we're here. But it would also help us in terms of when we speak or when we receive information, the way we process it, that it's in a manner, in accordance with the law, what's expected. So I'm going to take, I'm going to pass it on to her just to kind of talk about that a little more, but that was the reason for discussing this, more or less to give us education as we go forward. It's continuing education.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I am excited about this concept. I think everybody is better with information and with knowledge and with background. I think that this council could be incredibly productive, and I think these learning opportunities, which would be conducted in open session, would also be really valuable to the general public to actually get an understanding of what you all can do, what you're allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do, what the planning department can and can't do, what the public works department does. And so I think there's a huge learning opportunity for not just this council, but for the public in general. I scratched out a few ideas and for topics that I think would be very valuable. One of them would be roles and responsibilities of council, the town manager and town staff, and so that everybody understands, I'm big about, we all have a job in our roles here and how everyone, what is your lane, what are your responsibilities in your lane, and how to stay in your lane and let everybody else do their jobs. And I think that would be a really valuable conversation and discussion also. Council's role in planning and land use, that's enormously important, and it's a confusing, it's a very complicated topic, and I think that would be a great opportunity to roll out council's role in that process. Roles and responsibilities of each department, I think it would be a great opportunity for the department heads to come and explain everything that happens under their watch because these folks are busy and they do a lot more than you all see on a day-to-day basis and a lot more than the general public sees. I think that would be a great learning opportunity for everyone. The procurement process, how does, how is this town allowed to purchase goods and services? What are the rules we have specific to town and what are the state statutes? One of the biggest areas that municipalities and government gets in trouble for is procurement and on top of that, the ethics and conflict rules that go along with the procurement process. And financial policy, what is the town's financial policy? Who gets credit cards? What's our fund balance rules? How do we, how do department heads do their budgeting? Some of these, these sort of global policies, I think, would be very helpful discussions for this council to have, maybe at the pre-meetings or however everybody would like to set it up. But those are just some of the ideas I had, and I'm sure that you all will have questions and you may have topics that you would like to have discussed. And if we could start some system of getting that on a regularly scheduled calendar, I think that would be really productive.
Any input, Mr. Head?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Ms. Morse? Ms. Barber?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Shirley?
I agree with them. First thing I learned at the School of Government was, when you have to interrupt someone, point of order, and you get the floor when you say that, boy, I was happy to know about that one.
One more, one more comment. What I would, I know we do have the developer meetings, and those are important for us as council to sort of weigh in on some of the projects before they... for us as council to sort of weigh in on some of the projects before they're presented. But, um, would, uh, once a month, or once every two months, where for thirty minutes, a topic is chosen that Ms. Walter thinks would really help us, and then she present or so forth, or a staff, she asks, invites staff to talk about the plan and finance or whatever the case is, would that be a good? What schedule would, so first of all, it seems council likes the idea. Second thing is, what type of schedule can we keep while still continuing to do the people's business? But to be able to learn that as we go forward.
I, for one, like the once a month before the meeting, at least until we get caught up. And then we can go every other month when she gets new policy updates, um, or as needed, or every quarter, uh, once everybody's done, because it seems like there's a lot of topics that every other month might take forever. But for now, unless you can cover multiple topics in one hour. Any other comments?
Well, you know, we can also look at maybe dividing it up. If, if we have a developer meeting and we think it's only gonna take thirty minutes, we could take the other thirty minutes for. So I, yeah, I think it's an excellent idea. We just need to put some thought behind it and let's get started.
Leave that to Karen if anybody else has any input. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with it. I, I was just sitting here thinking if there was a council member that couldn't be in attendance on one of them training sessions, how we would get, to make sure nobody's missing a beat.
They watch the tip.
It's recorded.
I'm always available for you, so please call, you know, and we'd certainly, any, any materials we, I would distribute. And then I'm happy to take phone calls and answer questions, just as normal. I would really love the conversations to increase and so that we're, everyone's on the same page and we're, we're following the rules and learning, um, the best way to, best practices for council management. Again, you, the book, y'all have that book from the School of Government, which I really strongly suggest y'all read.
Like.
And if you can, think of a topic of like, we can never force each other on how we act. Everybody is their own individual. Just a simple, nice little, this is ethical, this is good, this is the proper way to act. If something really, um, disturbing happens and we get calls from the media to know to direct it to our communications director to make a official statement. Now, when each of you want to duke it out in the media, you can leave the staff out of it. But yeah, like, if something happens, she should be the one to make the statement through Patrick and direct them to, so we don't put our foot in our mouths. So if you can put something like that on there, if that's okay with councils, you agree with this continuing education before I break everything? Okay. Good. You have direction. Thank you, Marcus, for adding that. That brings us to Patrick. Do you have any updates you'd like to give us?
You are gonna get a long manager's report. I've been holding it because of the election. I've been holding it because of the organizational meeting, uh, and it's new format, very long. I would ask that if you have any question in regard to any item, I try to clarify them as much as I can, just to keep in mind what Karen was saying earlier in regard to copy and counsel. I'll be more than happy to come back the second meeting and clarify these items. You just list the items, five, six, say, Patrick, why did, why are we taxing this much or something like that? Anything in the report that you need clarification on? If you'd like to come and see me in person and hold all these items, I'll be more than happy to meet with you. Just emails back and forth sometimes, they go all over the place and, but whatever it takes, when you get that report, if you need any clarification in regard to any item, please let me know. We try to list everything you need to know, and the mayor always says, you know, that's an item needs to be on the manager's report rather than bringing it before the meeting. So I try to cover items on the report that I feel that do not come before council. And then any items that I feel that business item that needs to come before council, I skip it on the report, just to kind of give you an idea.
Okay.
Right?
Thank you. That brings us to council comments.
Ms. Howe?
It's nice sitting here listening. We made some progress tonight, didn't we, guys? And I hope this is gonna continue and we have that respect for one another and try to work any problems out before you get to the meeting. It's, it's not fair to the audience if we're sitting here arguing about things. We have to agree to disagree and do what's best for the town, and I'll say that a thousand times, because that's how I feel it should be. Thank you. Oh, and I'd like to thank anybody that's in here that sent cards for Ken. And, um, it was amazing to find how many cards that I did get. You would be surprised. I'm real proud of him, and the plaque was appreciated too by the whole family. Thank you.
Mr. Morse?
A very productive meeting tonight. I like what I'm hearing about the training, our budget. One of the frustrating things that, you know, being on Carpo was, is the, um, is DOT. Which is, you know, we have a situation here in town where there's an old neighborhood and a lot, a lot of times the older neighborhoods are, are somewhat neglected and it's no fault of the town or in the individual. But, you know, they're trapped with the, they had DOT streets and DOT don't have money and they don't farm it out enough. And maybe, you know, like in this situation, I got her first name, Gail, mentioning about Brookstone Village being a, a neighborhood with a twenty-five-year-old street that hadn't been touched. Maybe we can start thinking about that if we do have some monies. You know, how do we prioritize with these older neighborhoods that are still DOT maintained? But then, you know, you have to balance it with some of these private roads, which, so I'm very sympathetic to that. And I hope we can do something about it. We had a lot of, um, email traffic here on council regarding this, our garbage contract. And that's gonna be, um, you know, the, something on, that, that I think that we're gonna need to address. And I'd like to see us address it in a, in a public setting, more so than a email exchange behind the scenes, especially with what I've learned tonight with, from the attorney. I'm looking forward to 2020, working with you, gentlemen and lady. And, uh, thank you, thank you, staff, for having all the, everything prepared for us. It does make, well, it allows me to somewhat be able to do this job. Thank you so much and hope everyone has a good night. Thank you all for coming out.
Mayor Alvarez?
Wow, good evening. Um, I wanna thank the council for a productive meeting, working together and being welcoming to the continued education and training to make us better representatives for the people. And as Karen puts it, make it as boring as possible, so that everything is predictable and we know what we're doing. That's, that's wonderful. Um, I would also just say to the council, we have budget coming up, we have priorities coming up. It hasn't been done in a while. Think about what council wants to do to give direction to the town manager so he can direct his staff off of what our priorities are that are in writing. And instead of going back and, he inherited everything and is doing the very best he can to work on what was there. This is now 2020. Like Jerry said, it's, we need to give direction on our priorities so Patrick can better do his job as a town manager and direct the staff. Thank you, doing a great job, Patrick, considering there's really been very little direction over the last, since you, since you took over. It's been inheriting what was already in place and, um, you kept it all going. And I would appreciate that, as since Patrick works for the council, that we direct him on what our priorities are for the future. I just would, with Patrick's blessing, I'd like, Hayden, it's a new year. If you already have events scheduled, if you can get a calendar out to the council of public events going on that we might want to attend that are already scheduled and confirm that we are planting trees again this year?
Correct, Hayden. What I'd say is, uh, I read Abby, the most recent newsletter that went out had a full list of road risks that.
Oh, did, okay.
Ready on it.
I didn't even, you know, I, I read it, but I didn't even, I don't remember seeing that on there. I'll look again. All right. I look forward to working with you on planting trees. Have, always have fun with that. Just from what I hear from Jerry, Patrick, question for Patrick, you don't have to answer now.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way to make a proposal to DOT for these roads that are old that they will be allocating funds to? Where we sort of do the roads and expecting the money to come in and do some sort of, um, we pave, expecting the money in six months or twelve months and put a lim, have council put a limit? And it can't be, oh, we'll get to you in 2040, but work on the state-owned roads, bring them up, give them the bill and they know that that's already been funded. If there's a way, we can talk to them about that.
Just quickly, CRT pool has three levels. There is this, uh, technical committee that Todd and I, we attend. There is the staff committee and there is the MPO committee. The staff committee, I feel that's the right place to bring this issue before them. I was planning on doing it. They've been counseling this meeting a lot recently, to go before them, tell them how bad the streets are, ask about when they're gonna attend to them, et cetera, et cetera, and see if there is a program that we could work together. Maybe we'll put the money up front, they give it back to us, like a TIF program or something like that. So that was in our mind, well, let me see, it's been on Todd's mind, but not Todd Barber, Todd Hansinger. So what we'll do is we'll attend that staff meeting, come back to council with some feedback in that.
Thank you, that's, oh, oh, just wanted to, I think that's sort of what you were leading towards, Jerry. Get that clarified. Other than that, everybody, I hope you had a great holiday. Welcome 2020. Let's have a good year. Staff, thank you for everything. As always, Kathy, you're there when I need you. You're, you're wonderful. Thank you. Captain James, stay safe. Everybody, God bless.
Mr. Barber?
Well, I'd like to, uh, really thank everybody that since I got elected, we have a commitment to training. Seriously, I think it's a great idea and, um, I, I, I look forward to it. Certainly, being knowledgeable at your job is paramount, and I agree with that. Thank you. I wish everybody a happy 2020. It is as we set goals and objectives and budget. I don't think we have any more number one priority than our sheriff's department in making sure that they have the resources they need to keep our community safe. So you can bet that that's gonna be my number one priority. And Jim, it's great to hear that the town's in financial shape. I just think that's wonderful. I mean, that it's been taken care of and like you said, from the top down and every department is. When you're looking after the taxpayers' money, I mean, heck, I mean, they gotta say A-plus job on here. I mean, that's, that's paramount. I think it's just that you're looking after that and taking care of it is, is wonderful. And, and I agree with what Councilman Morse here said is, I think we gotta look at the roads and do what we can with working with the DOT. I did meet with Senator Todd Johnson recently and, and the DOT is just in bad shape. There's no other way to say it, but the only thing that does is affect our citizens and what we can do, I think, we gotta, we gotta try and do. And whether that means trying to help some people in private roads or what we gotta do, that's what I'm looking at. I'd like to thank the staff and everybody for, you know, doing a great job here. Letting Town Hall be welcoming to the citizens when they call, getting answers, whether it's what they wanna hear or not. Sometimes you still got to grin and bear it, I know, and I appreciate that and I understand that. Being in the business world is, you're gonna have complaints, but you do the best you can. Look forward to a great year, 2020. Looking forward to everyone here serving the town. And it's the year of the rat, but, hey, what can you say? But anyway, I wish everybody a blessed year and thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Um, so a few things. When, for, I'm gonna speak for myself, but maybe some of the other council members do feel that way as well. When we receive a complaint or some concern from a resident, the first thing I think of is, how can I gather facts to, to one respond to them? There's things that come to me, I don't have the requisite experience, nor do I have the facts to back it up. So the first thing I wanna do is to reach out either to the town manager so that he can gather information for me. The next thing that I wanna do is, once we've, once we have that information, is to provide a resolution or an answer to the resident. I know sometimes the answer is not necessarily what they're looking for, but the thing is, is providing them some information. For instance, the lady who came in tonight talking about her streets haven't been paved in twenty-five years. She's been paying taxes for twenty-five years. And to her, it shouldn't matter who really owns the street. She wants an answer. So we, as council, we feel, you know, we're employed to, to, to go out there and try and get an answer for her. Even if it means that we don't have all the information yet, but we do have some, and here's what we have so far. Or to provide a response to them, saying that we're working on it in the interim. Because the thing is, if we provide no information to them, no feedback saying we're looking into it, it may appear that we do not care. And that's the one thing that I know that's not happening is that I know that the town staff does care. But sometimes we do as council members and staff. We do have to provide an answer, just saying, please bear with us, we're working on it. Even if it takes two months, three months, we still just periodically provide a response. That's really, really critical, because the thing is, at the end of the day, we're, we all report or we're responsible for providing the services in the town that the residents do need and pay for. So that's one. Second thing, um, council, I do appreciate your insight tonight in, um, in this meeting. With anything that I do, I want knowledge. Knowledge is power. It gives me the ability to make informed decisions and I like making an informed decision. But it also kind of gives me a sort of rules of the road, where I know where I shouldn't go, where I should go. And being elected, you run for office, you're elected, but then now comes the hard part of really governing. And the easiest thing for us to sit up there and say is no. But when we get the information, we can actually respond and know that we're responding, um, with correct information and we're responding in a, in a professional and correct manner. Staff, as always, I do appreciate all that you guys do. And as we discussed the policy tonight regarding access to the building, know that if we catch any of those, I'm gonna make sure we put that in there. If we catch any of those guys, including me, roaming around, we, you know, that's it for you. You lose your access. So as, as, as the guy used to say, no soup for you, right? The one thing I wanna just mention that is happening globally, as we've been sitting here tonight, two bases interact. Two US bases, two of our bases have been attacked, all right, from missiles from Iran. So let's keep the soldiers in our prayers, the US soldiers, that is, and the coalition partners, let's keep them in our prayers. So that way that they can get out of this safe and that no harm can come to them. Okay? Thank you, everybody. Have a pleasant night. Appreciate all of you.
Patrick?
I'm, I'm last, right?
Yep.
I only got about thirty minutes, so. No, um, first of all, newsletter, Abby, tremendous. Thank you. It's on time. It's, it's always set up the same way. I think it's, it's perfect. I guess Mr. Ward has already left, but welcome him, um, as the new staff member. Everybody, Jim, Patrick, and I, and I know it goes around the whole staff, fund balance, terrific. You know, that gives us a lot of different opportunities to do a lot of different things. Street maintenance, and that's what I'm calling, what we've talked about. We really got, gotta get a handle on that. Gotta work with NCDOT to get some kind of payback. The thing that, that I keep coming, comes to my mind, the earlier we get started on this, pricing of roads is not going down. It's gonna continue to go up. So if we can use that to our advantage. We got two in here. Appreciate law enforcement. Building access. I, I, you know, I, I think we've come up with a great solution, uh, there, and let's just continue to work on that. And finally, um, training. Todd, I'm just as new as you are, really. I mean, it's, it's, every day, we, we, we need to be learning something. So I think that what we're setting up here is gonna make us all, just make it a better council. And thanks to all council, thanks for everybody showing up and drive home safely.
Is everybody? Okay. No closed session. Do you want one? We can make something up.
No, 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 no.
He did not ask for one.
Okay. Then I'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Yes.
So moved.